Okay, I have 6:30 PM. I will call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, May 17, 2021, 6:30 PM. This is a remote meeting. All members of the city council are present. In the city council room are the city manager Laura Dogan and city clerk treasurer James Johnson. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 3, 2021. I believe all the council members received the complete set of minutes. They were emailed today because the second page was inadvertently left out of our packet.
I move that we approve the minutes of May 3, 2021.
Motion made by Mr. Bashan. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Ms. Patterson make the second to approve the minutes of May 3, 2021. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. If there are no comments by members of the public, we will move on. The next item is the Menfromagog Community Maritime Presentation. And we have Douglas Kasten Koots from the Menfromagog Community Maritime Board of Directors. And he will be presenting a PowerPoint presentation this evening. Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleased to meet everyone virtually here. I'm representing the Menfromagog Community Maritime, MCM. Many of you know, but a group of us got together five years ago and started a campaign to buy the Northern Star and to keep it on the lake. We succeeded three years ago. And we started planning for our first season last season, which didn't happen, and we're about to begin this season. We set ourselves up as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. What I'm here to talk with you today about, next slide, please, is a vision that we have to set up what we would call the Menfromagog Maritime Education Center as part of this effort that we've started with the Northern Star. And I assume all of you have been to or at least know of the Leahy Echo Center in Burlington. This would ideally be our Newport version at the Gateway Center. We would apply the lessons learned and best practices from the experience they've had at the Echo Center. Currently, we have the ticket office there, the snack bar that the Natural Food Store used in past years. That is sort of our base of operations for now for the Northern Star dock there at the City Marina. The idea is that we would set up the Gateway Center as an education and resource center for the lake, but also for information about the entire watershed. And it would be seasonal. So there, the idea that we'd have seasonal environmental maritime and watershed education programs that we could run both inside in the Maritime Center off-season when we can't be on the boat, and then on the boat on the floating classroom when we're able to, season permitting. And it would also be a field trip destination for schools, both in the Northeast Kingdom and over the border in Quebec. The idea is upstairs, we would have classroom space for experiential learning activities, science lab and meeting space. Downstairs would be a demonstration area revolving science and cultural historical exhibits and a chance to showcase a number of our agribusiness partners who are going to be involved in the various cruises that we're planning. Next slide, please. So the idea is that we, our vision is that the Maritime Center would be a center of knowledge and go-to place for all, for tourism promotion, also for the city, for the lake, for the watershed, for the Northeast Kingdom. And there would be lake-based education, research, tourism opportunities for science and history, environmental education, but again, with hands-on programs for students and teachers, local community groups, tourists and visitors, very much the way that they do it at the Echo Center in Burlington. We would also provide office space and program activity space for two of our key partners in this endeavor, the MWA, the Watershed Association, and also our Watershed Association over in Quebec, MCI. Again, the whole idea is that we would be able to do this year around by working inside in the education center as well when the boat isn't able to be used. There would be an invasive species exhibit, interactive exhibits for children, and also a maritime training center. The Border Patrol, the state police have all indicated that they would love the opportunity to be able to have a center that they could use as needed for training in navigation and rescue, both off the boat, but also in the center itself. Next slide, please. So we have this concept of a floating classroom. The whole idea is to facilitate access on the water for our elementary and middle school students in the Northeast Kingdom counties. We have a youth discovery program, grades three and four, that we are doing together with NWA that will begin in a couple of weeks' time. Coventry Schools are going to be involved, and I have already committed to that program. We have another one called the Next Generation Science Leadership Program, which would be part and parcel of the science curriculum for the environment that they already use. We have two schools we're working with, Derby Middle School and Coventry, not Coventry, Charleston Middle School. There's a Starry-Sky Night Program, which is students out on the water, learning about the stars, and that going on at night, together with the Fairbanks Planetarium. There are history programs that we're setting up as well. So we would have exhibits both in the center as well as speakers out on the boat, depending on the time of year. We have had discussions with UVM's Rubenstein Lab, which many of you may know has a hands-on science lab at Echo. We hope to do the same at the center here. And also with the University of Sherbrooke, which is the counterpart in Quebec on the science education side, we hope to do the same with them. Next slide, please. Just a couple of pictures of kids out on the water, so important that we get our students out on the water. Many of them have never had an opportunity, don't have access to boats, have parents that don't have the time. These pictures, this one and the next one, please. This is taken a couple of years ago when Captain Chris Johansson, who owned the boat before, did a couple of programs like this where we had Orneans County third grade students out on the boat. And we're following very much that precedent that was set then. There was so much interest afterwards, we felt this was time that we would be doing the same. Next slide, please. So again, this is a vision that I'm just sharing with you at this stage. There's no commitments, there's no guarantees, there's no funding necessarily yet for any of this. But I have had a number of discussions, or we on the team, with these groups that I've listed here. The way I've been playing it is, as you can see, many of these organizations, like the Lake Champlain Basin Program, are obviously all focused very much towards the Big Lake in Burlington. And I find that when we talk about what we're doing over here and that, there's a lot of interest and a lot of realization that they're not giving equal time to what we do over here. And that, I think, is an opportunity for us. The Echo Center would be involved, as I mentioned. UVM has also mentioned that they'd also like to work with us on science teacher development and training. USDA rural development programs, these are all opportunities for funding once we get started on the plan. The congressional delegation, we've had discussions with. There's the possibility of revisiting the whole earmark plans that many of you know Congress did away with many years ago. Senator Leahy was able to fund the Echo Center based on an earmark. Well, evidently, they're now thinking, or they are going ahead and reintroducing earmarks now. And so we're going to look into one of those as well. Next slide, please. So the idea is look to the lake. It's a slogan, it's a motto, a mantra that's been talked about a lot. What we would do in this vision is lease the Gateway Center, redevelop it, repurpose it, solicit funding and support to do that, and in collaboration with the city, and you know, consistent with the various master plans and efforts that I know exist to expand outdoor recreation opportunities, we think that that would very much tie in. And we think it supports an overall vision of drawing more folks downtown, local residents as well as tourists and visitors, and to support downtown businesses. They will very much be involved in the various specialty and theme cruises that we are doing this summer on the Northern Star. And once we're able to set up the education center, we'd also be able to use that venue as well, again, for seasons, not just in the summer when we're on the boat. So everyone has a copy of this PowerPoint. Those are the two links to the website that we use, Northern Star Cruises. There's a Facebook page, and there's also a separate Facebook page for our organization, MCM. Thank you. I was asked to be within 10 minutes, I hope I was.
That's okay. One question, did you submit the requests to Senator Leahy and Sanders or Congressman Ruck?
We're.
Because I know they were soliciting requests for potential earmarks. I didn't know if you had already submitted.
I've submitted one to Sanders staff on that one. Leahy, in the meantime, has come up as well. I'm going to do that. The deadline for that one is this Friday. So yeah, that's exactly it. And that's why, again, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to have this presentation ahead of time because I didn't want you all to hear sort of out on the street that this guy, Doug Koots, is running all around talking about this. I mean, it's a vision and an idea that I've been flogging for a few years now, together with others on the board. And we think this is maybe a good opportunity now to really push this with the earmark potential, but also because we're able to sail now for the first time. We were completely dead in the water last season, as you all know. Pardon the pun.
Right, right. I know. I felt really bad that you, last summer was going to be your first summer and everything hit, and so.
Lots of plans, but nothing worked.
Any questions from city council members? Well, I think, I like your idea, I like your vision. It's just a matter of coming up with the resources to help bring it to fruition. But I do like the idea and the vision because I can remember when attending a visioning session, it was actually for the Bluffside Farm, but the idea of a science center came up even at that visioning center, a vision session. And so I do like your idea.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we're looking forward to developing it further. It's received a lot of interest, it's piqued folks' interest at this stage, tying it in with what we do with the Northern Star and with the watershed group, as I mentioned. All seems to make lots of sense right now. And I feel that this is a great time with all the issues, all the discussions on water quality and all the rest of it. I think it would be good to have a science center, lots of good solid discussions on science going forward.
I agree. Any questions from any council member?
I think I'm neutering myself this time.
Go ahead.
I just want to add on that some of the most enriching experiences and learning opportunities for students is when they can have that hands-on, out-of-the-classroom experience. I can teach till I'm blue in the face, but sometimes it's just that hands-on experience that really makes a click. So it's great.
Yeah, indeed.
Anything else then? If there isn't any, Doug, thank you for coming this evening and presenting, and I wish you the best of luck in moving forward.
Pleased to be here. Thank you so much for having me. I'll keep you all posted as we progress, and that'd be great. So am I dismissed?
Yes, you are. Enjoy the nice weather outside.
Will do. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Bye now, thank you.
Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is the Small Scale Vermont Bike and Pedestrian Grant Application for Way Finding Informational Signage. And I will turn it over to the city manager. I believe we have Mike Welch joining us also.
Yeah. Mike, do you want to, yeah, there you are. Do you want to chime in?
So thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Laura sent you and members of the council mempo outlining this grant opportunity. The Vermont Bike and Ped program has a small grant program. The applications are due on June 4. One of the eligible activities is wayfinding signage to direct visitors to some of the trail opportunities, pedestrian opportunities in the community. This is one of the items that has been identified in the waterfront master plan. We did contract with Roger Dickinson from Lammron Dickinson to provide us with some cost estimates and a concept plan. So look at all the wayfinding signs across the community and directing them to the multiple trail network that will now be going from downtown Newport all the way to the eastern townships. This is just a good opportunity to update those signs. So as people come into the community from the lake, or from the interstate, or from the state roads, we will have directional signs indicating where you can access each one of those trail networks. So this program is a 50% match. The maximum grant is $125,000. So based on Roger's estimates, the total project here is $97,500. The city's 50% match would be $48,750 to be provided both by DPW installation of the signs and with a city match. So your commitment total is $48,750, and the concept would be to update all of the wayfinding signage leading into the city toward these trails. And I believe Laura has got some great examples. The downtown organization has contracted with Fleck, a graphic designer here in St. Johnsbury, to work on some designs, and so she can give you a basic idea of what some of these concepts might be, might look like. Laura.
So certainly, some of the concepts that are being presented for the downtown board to make a decision are much more vibrant colors. They kill the brown, which is a good thing. They take into consideration the lake, the mountains, the skyline. Outdoor recreation is really permeating through each design, as well as an appreciation for our assets in the area. Once the downtown board makes a decision on their final concept, that'll be revealed. And it's our intention, should this grant be awarded and should the council see fit to apply for it, that we'll take the new logo from the downtown organization and impress it upon our wayfinding signs. Everything will be consistent. I think that, I think you have a map, if you could pull that map up, Mayor or council member Bashan, I think it'll give a visual, there you go, gives a bit of a visual of all of the assets that we have existing within this area in the very short time that we've been working on this since 2018, I think was when the waterfront and downtown master plan was approved. And if you could scroll up and down just a little bit on that screen, I think we could see the bottom as well as the top. You can see that assets start right at the Newport City docks and go forward to Gardner Park, Crowdy Beach, of course, the Bluffside Farm. And just as an aside, if those of you on the meeting tonight have not been down to Crowdy Beach to see the magnitude of work that's being done down there to connect the path to the Bluffside Bridge, it's wonderful. So please, take a walk down there and take a look at it. But then you can see the additional assets adding up to BB Spur. The emphasis of these wayfinding signs will be for the city of Newport, and that's an important distinction. They will also have the same internationally known icons on the sign. So in order to make sure that we consider non-English speakers coming into the city, I know it's hard to imagine why the border is closed, but this is not going to be our reality forever, something that we're very excited about, to be able to finally emphasize and have consistency and updated vibrancy for our visitors to know exactly where they're going. So that's pretty much all I can add to something that's very exciting, I think.
Are there questions from city council members?
Just a comment that it's interesting because I know all of these things exist, but seeing them all put together and how they're connected sort of makes me look at it differently. Again, I knew they all existed and, you know, but I don't think I've ever seen the whole, all the different things together in one place and laid out like this. I think that's really good.
I just want to credit Karen Gerardi from NVDA, who is the person that generated this map, and a multi-talented individual right there. So we're grateful to her for letting us use it for this purpose.
Other comments or questions? Okay, so Laura, so we have the cash match, as you said, I believe you said it's in the restricted capital budget?
Yes.
And it will be, and then, so we do have the cash for this.
Yes.
Because this would be in the new fiscal year.
These funds are already restricted. And Mike, refresh me on the timeline of the grant. I think we have to have everything spent by October of 2022. Do you recall when the timeline for announcing the award?
So they anticipate that the announcements will be made in July, and then work needs to be completed by December 31, 2022.
All right, any other questions from anyone? Then, the proposed resolution is that the city council of the city of Newport hereby authorizes city manager Laura Dogan to prepare, submit and sign all documents related to an application for funding for the Small Scale Vermont Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant Program, not to exceed a total project cost of $97,500. That the city council of the city of Newport does hereby commit to funding the required 50% local match for the Small Scale Vermont Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant Program in the amount of $48,750 to be provided as in-kind labor, equipment and materials through the Department of Public Works, $22,500, and cash, $26,250. And as part of the motion, but also to be, to approve the letter. The letter, which is like the letter, the commitment letter. And that would, between the two resolutions, we would include the commitment letter as part of the motion. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Separate clarification, Mr. Mayor, are we, we're talking about two separate motions, are we not?
I think it could be combined as one because the two resolutions and the letter of support really all tie together. And so I thought it would just, could be one motion.
Okay.
I think I'm okay with that. Mike Welch, is that, is that okay, you think?
I agree with that, Mr. Mayor. The way you stated it is perfect.
Okay, thank you.
So I would entertain the motion.
Does that move, Mr. Mayor?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
All second.
Made by Mr. Bashan, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau. Discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries. Great. And I look, hopefully we are successful.
Yes, thank you very much, city council. And the letter of support does require a signature from all. If you could stop in, and we'll get that out. And we're, we're on good on our timeline. Thank you all very much. This is exciting.
And thank you, Mike. And thank you, Mike Welch, for helping out, as always.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, moving on. The next item is a water and sewer allocation. The fee has been paid. It is for a new connection. The parcel ID is 119008.01. It's a new connection for a new single-family home. We have the allocation. The sewer allocation is 210 gallons per day, which is the standard. The application has been filled out and is complete. And the fees have been paid. And are there any questions regarding the application? If there are no questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve the preliminary wastewater allocation application.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Actually, it's for wastewater and redle water. It's for wastewater and water allocation. I want to make sure I include the water. So it's for both.
Water and sewer, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I, I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve the application. Is there a second?
Mr. Wilson, second.
Seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And now, we need an executive session. It's for discussion of a real estate purchase or lease option, 1VSA 313A2. And we would need a motion to go on executive session.
Moved to go to executive session to discuss a real estate purchase or lease according to 1VSA 313A2.
Motion's been made by Ms. Patterson, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bashan, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. So everybody will be put on hold, and then the people in executive session will be brought into the executive session.
This line is now on hold. This line is now off hold.
Okay, we are now out of executive session, and at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the lease sale to John Cody of a plus or minus 6,000 square foot strip of land that is a portion of the former Clyde Street near 24 Kent Lane, Newport, Vermont for $2,400, plus the city's transaction costs, including posting and publication of the notice of sale of municipal real estate, and to authorize the mayor to execute the quitclaim, conveying the abhor said strip of land to John Cody, as well as any other related closing documents if no, excuse me, if no petition is submitted objecting to said conveyance.
A motion is made by Ms. Patterson, is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
Made by Ms. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Bashan. Discussion on the motion? If there is no discussion... If there is no discussion, then all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, new business. I don't have any new business. Ms. Patterson, any new business?
No, new business, just comment that looked like it was a good weekend, this past weekend. Looked like we had a lot of positive ATV activity, a lot of folks downtown, so I was happy to see that.
Okay. Mr. Charbonneau, new business?
No new business.
Mr. Wilson, new business?
I have two things. First one is for the Memorial Day service. When is that?
31st.
The 31st?
First, 10?
10. At 10 o'clock, and that's going to be over at the park. At the park, yes.
Good. And now the second thing, and I brought it up to Mr. Dogen this morning. I, I heard comments about the motor, the ATVs. Well, on this weekend, one of the streets that they're not authorized on is West Main Street. We had a group of five go by and then 20 minutes later, a group of two go by on West Main, and then one on Sa, on Sunday. One of my neighbors up the hill said that there was two going up and down Longview. I didn't hear them. And one on Longview owns an ATV. So it's not like we're driving to some road that they're allowed on. Now, I was told today after I talked to the chief that the ATV season opened 15 May for their trails, but the city has not opened up until June sometime. So I guess what I'd like is for the, possibly the city manager, or if not, someone to notify Mr. Janess, who was the head of this club, that, you know, we can call the police, but by the time the police get there, they're already gone. I think if in fact, they're not, the agreement we gave them was supposed to start in June, I was told by the chief. Well, if that's the case, they shouldn't have been on here, going on these unauthorized streets to start with. And I think Mr. Janess or someone within the club ought to notify all the members that they need to follow the, the more guidance that we gave them this past few months ago, giving them more streets and to stay off the long streets that they're not supposed to be on. That's all I have.
Okay, so, so John, nobody took the time to call the police then? Just curious.
No, no. I, I, so why am I going to call when, as soon as they've gone around the corner? And then I talked with Seth today, not Seth, Travis, and he said, please call, that way they can log down where they may have been and at what time, what streets. But he said that at no time, we authorize them to be on other streets if they live there, they owned an ATV and were going to the main streets they're allowed on. Well, they can go to Highland Avenue, but coming through Newport, you're not supposed to be on the Lake Road and/or West Main. Those are two big streets that they need to start avoiding. So I really don't want to call on the police every time. I'd like the club to set themselves to notify their members, hey, either we follow the rules or they're going to lose it. But if it's required to call the police, ah, come on. I've got, had a lot more important things to do than calling the police every time someone wants to break their rules. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Laura, is, is the chief on? If, if the chief would like to make any comments or any, yeah, I guess I'd just have you make a few comments in response to Mr. Wilson's concerns. I know the ordinance takes effect June 18th.
Junely.
June, 18th, June. And I know the club, the club made it known, I know, made it known to their members, as far as I know. And so, but I don't know if Travis has anything he'd like to add.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so I think, you know, every, like Mr. Wilson said, by the time they call the police, the time we get there, they're definitely gone. But I still encourage folks to definitely give us a call. And the reasoning being is, it's like anything, like we try to direct our resources to where they're, you know, the best, the best use for that is. So if we get complaints in, let's just say, West Main Street, if we get several complaints in that area, then we could certainly do directed patrols in there and try to cut down on some of that traffic that's not supposed to be there. So, you know, I would encourage folks to call the police for if they, you know, they see things that are not being followed by the ordinance that's in place. You know, and I would also encourage maybe to make sure that, and I don't mind doing it, I can certainly reach out to Mr. Janess and make sure that that ride app is up to date. And maybe we can have better signage within the city to try to keep folks on the regulated trail. Like, a lot of people from the area do know that when you come down Highland, if you cut down West Main, it's a quicker route to Main Street. And I think that might be part of the issue. And then I just think the other part of the issue is that a lot of people heard that, you know, Newport City streets are opened up now, which it's opened up for direct access to and from the trail, and that's it. So now they just assume that maybe all the streets in Newport are open. So I, I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding and maybe we can all just do a little bit better job of educating the ATV riders. Our officers were out definitely all weekend patrolling, did a couple of directed patrols both days. They saw several hundred ATVs. They stopped one group because they didn't have helmets on and they issued a warning. And that was it. Other than that, they said that they were abiding by the laws, they were driving the speed limit, those kinds of things. So I think, I think maybe we can all just do a little bit better on educating people and that new ordinance doesn't go into effect, the amendments, until June 18th, if I'm correct.
That's correct. The only thing, I was thinking, on the signage, is there a way to get a little bit bigger signs? I know the club put up all the signs, but I was just, maybe that's something we could ask Mr. Janess, you know, to put up, because the signs that say no ATVs beyond here are rather small. And I'm just wondering if they have a bigger sign, because I think, because I think in, I saw, I can't remember where I went through, and they had a big yellow sign that said ATV route. It looks just like a big meadow sign, but maybe they could get some slightly larger signs that say no ATVs beyond this point, to kind of clearly mark it.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And maybe even like a no-through traffic sign at those, you know, the roads where people tend to cut traffic, just to try to get somewhere a little bit quicker. So I think there's a couple possibilities there. It's, it's, overall, it was a good weekend as far as ATV goes. It didn't get any complaints that came in for anything. So I, you know, to me, that's, that's a good thing, but we know there's going to be some wrinkles along the way and we'll, we'll try to get them ironed out here, hopefully.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Wilson?
I will go out myself tomorrow to look for more of these, the signage that they have. But we're assured with the new streets like Mount Vernon and that opening up, like, this, some of the signage that's coming off from Highland Avenue, it was put up last year. And some of the signs really are dangling with one staple in them, and I think the signage ought to be improved, yes.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, John?
No, that's it. Memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bashan, any new, the new business?
No new business, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dogen? Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. I do have something for new business. Last year, in the middle of June, we were able to put on a community summit to update the public on a number of our projects. And I'm happy to announce that we're able to do the same thing this year. So I'd like to invite everybody to attend another remote meeting, remote, even if the world opens up by June 16th, we're still going to keep this particular presentation remote. And it'll be June 16th, starting at 6:30. We will announce the login, very similar format to what you experienced on a city council meeting. I'm pleased to announce that we have several groups in attending that have confirmed, including Memphor Magog Watershed Association, the Ramon Land Trust for the Bluffside Farm, Mad Dog Trot Unlimited, who's recently received a grant to do a film expose on the Clyde River, the Grandstand Committee, the Recreation Committee, all of our internal departments, including the Planning Commission, will give an update on the work that they're doing on the municipal plan. The Newport City Downtown Development, Memphor Magog Community Maritime. Peter Emerson will give us an update on the survey that he's been conducting for the past couple of years on the health and well-being of fish in Lake Memphor Magor, and ending with the young professionals. So we've got some very dynamic, exciting things that are happening, and this will be an opportunity to bring people up to date. So I do hope you'll plan your evening for a nice remote participation, June 16th, starting at 6:30. And we'll put some media out between now and then and remind you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Not for me.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Nope, okay. Moving on, old business. I don't have anything. Ms. Patterson? Any old business?
No.
Okay, Mr. Charbonneau?
No old business.
Mr. Wilson?
No old business.
Mr. Bashan?
No old business, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dogen?
Just something I should have mentioned under my new business, please, is that we're able to bring this meeting out of the, as a result of procuring funding through our CDI grant. And I just wanted to give Mike and that grant credit because we are incurring expense for a professional facilitator, which is great. It's exactly what we did last year, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Any old business, Mr. Johnson?
Uh huh.
Okay. Okay, the next city council meeting is Monday, June 7th, 2021, 6:30 PM. And I was planning on having it as an in-person meeting with the governor's announcement last week, and I think three weeks from now, I think we'll be farther along. So I was looking to go back to in-person meetings. I don't know if the council has any concerns over it, but I was just basing it upon the governor implementing his stage three of the reopening plan two weeks early. And I figured we're three weeks from our next meeting, so I thought it would be going back in person. I didn't know if the council had any comments or questions about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Wilson? Yay, thank you.
Ms. Patterson, I think I saw you.
Yeah, is it possible that we can meet in the auditor, not the auditorium, in the gymnasium? Just so that we still can keep a little distance and stuff, because we still, I know that things are looking better, but we, we would have, you know, a mixed audience, we would probably have vaccinated people, unvaccinated people, you know, the whole nine yards. So I would like to be in a space that gives us some distance.
As long as-
I know it's an inconvenience.
No, but I think, no, I think we slowly phase in. I just felt the time was to go back to meetings, but the gym will work. The thing I would need to make sure so that we can continue remote, I, I still want to continue the remote access at the meeting. We just have to make sure we run that long network cable from the recreation office to the gym. The one, Laura, that I, hopefully they still have the one that I made for them.
Yep.
That would still allow remote access through the free conference call.
Well, I appreciate it, because I just, I just don't want to be crammed into the, you know, I've gotten this far, I've been a year and a, you know, almost a year and a half, and I don't want to get hit now because I'm crammed into a council meeting with, you know, next, next participants.
Right, right, because we, we, as the governor said, it's, it's an honor system, whether you've been, because if you've been vaccinated, you can sit side by side, but you really don't know. And as he said, it's an honor system. They're not going to mandate anything. So I agree with using the gym.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
No problem. Other council members?
Not much, was just along the lines of what Ms. Patterson said, just the spacing and what our plan was without, so that's very good for me.
Okay. Laura, did you have?
I, I wholeheartedly agree. Putting it in the gym, we ease into it, I think is a really smart idea for all the reasons that Melissa articulated. I appreciate that very much. We'll have the room set up.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, personally, I just felt it was time and with things reopening and, you know, the governor moving ahead. I do think more people, more and more people are, a lot more people will be vaccinated too between now and the next meeting. And so my gut's saying to me, it's time to try to start getting back to normal, even though we probably may never see complete normal again, but it's time to take baby steps to move forward, so.
Well, I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad you're going to continue the remote aspect or some way for people to call in, because I do think that's been very beneficial. And I think we've been able to get a lot done and have a lot of participation in these meetings over the past, oh, 14 months now. And I think it's, I think we've done a lot of work, and I think the remote's been a blessing, believe it or not. So glad we can continue with that.
Well, thank you. I think overall, the remote has worked, you know, worked well, considering, I mean, there's been a few glitches here and there, but overall, I'd say 95% of the time, it's worked wonderful. Allowed people to connect, allowed us to present, you know, various presentations. And I ran the meeting exactly as if we were in the council room. The only difference is people connected via telephone or their computer, and, but I allowed plenty of time for comments and, on motions and comments on the public comment. And so I just want to say that I think overall, the remote worked well, but I think people are starting, starting to itch to get back in person. So, okay, anything else? Then with that, we need a motion to adjourn at 7:28 PM.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
A motion made by Mr. Charbonneau, is there a second?
Second, Mr.
Mr. Wilson seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. We have adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.